...the Kentucky Regional School Committee Business Meeting of February 23rd, 2016.
Got a little bird.
So, roll call, we have Wayne Adams as president, Joanna Blanchard, I'm here, Doug Jalina is missing.
He's on his way in.
He's on his way, yes.
I mean, he's coming in.
Oh, he's literally on his way.
Yeah. We have, we have proof.
Doug is coming, is entering the building. Andy Murphy is here, Lisa O'Connor is here, Brian Page is here, Chris Redding is here, Chris Wile is absent, and Jack Colette is here. That is for you. Do we know if Chris is coming?
Chris Wile is not coming tonight.
Okay.
4.4.
4.4. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the, we have the amended agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amended agenda? All right, all in favor? Okay. So, before we start, I want to say two things. First, I know we have problems with the sound quality in this room, so if you can't hear us, please let us know. Also, feel free to move your chairs up closer. You know, you might want to just do that right now because you're pretty far away from us, so feel free to get up and move in. Second, Mary Ann has handed me the save the date for the day on the Hill. It's Tuesday, April 26th, so if anybody would like to attend, please email Mary Ann or if you want more information, just talk to, talk to Mary Ann after the meeting about that. Okay. So, the first thing on the agenda are the Kentucky Education Foundation donations, and we have Anna Marie Beach here. And, I don't know, Anna Marie, did you bring somebody else with you, or is it just you? Okay.
Oh, Lori. Lori's here. Yeah, I'm Lori. She's not officially on our board, but is a huge helper. So, welcome, hello. So, tonight, we have four grants that we want to present, and the first one is for the middle school, and it's a, this was a great collaborative effort between the PF, the Penn Duckett Middle School, PTO, as well as the three local police departments from West Newbury, Groveland, and Merrimack, in support of the speaker who's going to be there tomorrow evening at 6:30, Caitlin Greer, who is a renowned speaker in regards to Internet and digital safety. She's been on USA Today, Time Magazine, Good Housekeeping, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're very excited to help support that, and it's a grant in the amount of $250 from the PF towards that. So, it's my understanding you don't have to vote except on one.
Except for one.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, so, moving right along, the next one is for the high school, and I also have Marcia Nato, who is here tonight from the high school, who actually presented this grant to us. It's in the amount of $2,250, and it's basically to pay transportation or tuition costs, a student's choice, for up to 30 students, to attend an eight-week seminar at Mass College of Art. And I know Marcia wanted to just say a few words on that, so.
I just wanted to thank the Penn Duckett Education Foundation for their support in this program. We're really excited about the students and the staff. It's something that I have been encouraging my students to participate in for the last 19 years. It's a wonderful program, and when they do participate in this program, they come back energized, and it's infectious. The issue has always been the transportation piece to Boston for Saturdays for eight weeks. Not only is it costly to take the train, it's $21 round trip, but a lot of parents aren't comfortable with their high school student, child, taking the train on Saturdays. They would have to commit to driving them, so it's a burden on families, and in most cases, impossible. So, any student that has been able to take these courses have just been thrilled with them. I have never had anything but the best thing to say about them. So, this has been such a boost for our program. We really appreciate that the Education Foundation is supporting us. We currently have 22 students, and there are still a few openings, and kids are talking to me about it, so the bus will leave here. It also leaves an opportunity for some seats on the bus for maybe teachers involved in BTS, because the Museum of Fine Arts is right down the street, so it might open up even additional opportunities. So, I just can't wait to be on the bus when they get out of their studio session and just feel the energy in the bus, so, thank you.
Great. And we appreciate you putting grant and all the effort forward, Marcia, thank you. And then the last two grants is a combination grant. So, first off, we want to thank the Newburyport Five Cent Savings Bank, who supported this grant effort, and it's for $7,500 in total. It's going to, the way it was broken out, it was, how it was put forward to us, $2,500 is for the Bagnell School, and $5,000 is for the Page School. And we want to thank Patty Doggett and Brendan Keenan for submitting the grants. And this is for what we call the Creative Station Maker Space, which is modeled after the Maker Lounge at the PBD Essex Museum. It's a designated, it will be a designated room at the Page and the Bagnell School, where students can work together and explore ideas and apply their thinking in hands on ways to project that grow out of these exploration and ideas. It ties in nicely with the STEAM Academy at both of those schools. The rooms will be equipped with a combination of new recycled and donated materials that will allow the students to create hands-on projects related to the curriculum. I also want to say that the PEF actually was aware of our grant and actually put in some money for the Bagnell to provide some shelving and storage, so it was a nice way that we were able to jointly work with them as well. So, any questions on any of that? But again, it's, it's $2,500 to the Bagnell School and $5,000 for the Page School.
Any questions?
Yes, Doug.
I guess the work I would have is the suites of school, the Donahue School.
Yeah, well, the Page School was the ones who came to the PF first with this grant request, and our Grants Committee actually went out to both the other elementary schools to see if they would be interested so we could do a joint effort. But I think because they don't have the STEAM program per se, it didn't tie in or didn't make sense, so, but the Bagnell definitely wanted to come on board.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we tried to make it similar to when we did the STEM Labs with the elementary schools a few years ago.
All right, I appreciate, we're grateful for the work that you do. I just, when I'm, you know, hearing what you're saying, I'm thinking one school, another school, and so, but I understand that they didn't want to get involved, absolutely.
Not, not just yet. So, everybody was offered, and Rob thought the timing was just a little bit off for him, so he's delayed that a little bit.
That's the only indicator.
Yeah, and we, and we would definitely leave it open to them if they want to come back, and we could see if we can help them out as well, and then.
No, I absolutely appreciate the work, even though I don't want, you know, my question to cloud them, and then it worries. Thank you.
We need a motion. Any other questions? All right, Anna Marie, thank you very much for your efforts, for the efforts of the PEF to continue to support the schools. Yeah, so. I need a motion to support, to accept the $5,000 grant from the PEF for the STEAM program.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. Okay, oh, we need, you have the other one. So, we have a donation from Biogen, from their foundation's Ignite the Power of STEM Grant Program, in the amount of $5,000. And we'd like to thank Ms. Hillary Seager, Ms. Karen Bedley, and Mrs. Catherine Somalia, which are Bagnell teachers, in addition to Brendan Keenan, for writing this grant. And I would like a motion to approve this grant, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussions? Anybody, anything else they want to say? All in favor? All right. So, now we have need for an executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, which I do. And this is related to the Penn Duckett Association Unit C Nurses. And I need a roll call for executive session, so, and we will be coming back into public session. So, Chris Redding?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, we need a motion to go into it. Yeah, sorry, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, so, I need a motion to enter executive session.
Make a motion to enter into executive session. Second.
Okay.
We're all set.
All right, so, we're up to Jack.
Nobody's changed their eye.
Okay. Okay, so, we will be coming back.
Motion, nobody but Brian. I'll get you.
You do this to me all the time, and I'm like, I can't believe.
I have to go.
You got that right.
Thank goodness.
No, it's only freezing here.
Oh, my gosh.
It's refreshing in here.
How do they work in there?
I don't know.
Open the windows.
Have a personal air conditioner.
Okay.
These will build a top balance.
Okay, all right. So, the first thing on the agenda, I need, I would like to make a motion to approve the one-year Nurses Unit C Contract as negotiated, and allow them to participate in the Unit A Contract Negotiating agreement for fiscal year 18.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Is everybody here? Okay? Yeah, everybody's here. Okay. Okay, so, it is now time for the public hearing on the fiscal year 16 budget proposal.
Actually, it's a typo, 17, right?
Oh, no. Oh, you're right. Fiscal year 17 budget proposal.
So. So, you want me to give a synopsis?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to give you a little synopsis of where we've been, and I'll rely on Greg to help me out on this. So, when we first approached everybody back in January, that was before the governor's budget had come out, and since then, I think we've had a subcommittee meeting, and the budget has really crystallized in a way that has been fairly predictable, and I really appreciate Greg's good work in helping to explain and bring everything to fruition for us. So, here's where we are. The state budget gave us $60,000 less than last year, so that was a shortfall that we had to pick up, and we hadn't anticipated. In addition to that, the comparison for special education from last year to this year is about $818,000 different. So, that's an expense that we don't control, and by that I mean, special education decisions are outside of the administrative functions, so it would be illegal for me to impose any decision-making around special education decisions. So, you can add the $60,000 and the $818 or so together. Another factor for us that is outside of our control was electricity. So, the utility increased its amount in about $100,000, was it about $100,000, Greg?
It was originally, then we cut it back a little bit when I got a better handle on it.
Yeah, but it was in around there.
That's an increase of that amount?
Yeah, they increased.
For the three schools in West Newbury, because National Grid was giving a 37% increase by the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, when you get a 37% increase, and I'm trying to limit our budget to a 2.5% increase, that kind of blows you up over there. So, yeah. So, the bottom line is that we had just shy of, you know, $900,000 or so to take care of, and you know that we were over 3, maybe 3.4% when we came to you back in January. So, the good news is, with your direction, Greg has managed to bring us back down to about a 2.49% increase over last year. So, that's really good work. Now, part of that work, I'm just going to wait for all of you to look at what you need.
Can't hold the test.
Well, and it, you know, it just makes it hard. Yeah, because there's going to be a test in just a minute. The test is coming up quickly. That's good enough. So, you would wonder about, well, how can the district continually be on the front end of such a low-budget increase? So, if we took out the $800,000, as an example, from our 2.49%, we'd be in around 0.3% increase over last year, you know, which is pretty phenomenal. So, you know, in the past couple of years, we've been around 1.8, about 0.54, about 2.3, and if you took out the unexpected special ed increases or the uncontrolled special ed increases, we'd be at about 0.3, probably the lowest we've ever come in at. So, you'd wonder about, well, how can you continually, as a district, be doing that? Because if you look at other companies or other organizations, they're having a lot of trouble with that same problem of wrestling their budget every year. Well, the good news is that, I guess we don't have any moss growing on us at all. We're always looking for ways to manage our contracts, manage our health care insurance, manage the things that we can control, and to do that, we rely on the good partnership with our employees. So, all of the three unions, for instance, I mean, all of the unions got together with us, and we renegotiated, redecided on how health care needed to continue along. Because if you remember, last year, we had about an 11% increase, and, you know, rather than just standing by and letting that happen, the GIC was an alternative that we needed to investigate, and we all decided that that was the best alternative for right now. So, even though we only have estimates, we're only estimating what the cost increase will be, we're pretty confident that it won't be an 11% like we got last year. So, once again, if we're trying to manage our budget at 2.5%, and you get these hits for 10% or the National Grid for 37% increase, it just blows up your budget over and over again. Another example would be the good work that our unions have done in understanding the way that we need to be sustainable over time. So, their contracts for year-to-year salary increases are no more than 2.5% per year, and that's been for a couple of years now. So, you would say, well, that's great, they're, they're sort of at the top end, they're, you've maxed everybody out at 2.5%. Well, not really. That's not really the case. The real case is, is that we are currently at the lowest percentage increases per year in anybody's memory, long-term memory, because what would happen is, even if it was just a small percentage increase, by virtue of having columns and steps, the salary scale was being shifted by individuals, not intention, like, they weren't intentionally doing this, but when they get more education and more experience, they would get more than the 2.5%. So, you could never control it, the variable was so large, you couldn't predict it what controlled it. So, we've taken variability out of our budget process, we're trying to, we've tried to manage contracts, we've tried to manage health care insurance, and only by virtue of that are we able to come in at a 2.49% increase. Can you imagine if, on top of everything, we had an 11% increase in health care, we had, I don't know, an 8% increase in contracts? Like, it would just blow us right out of the water. So, the good news is the 2.49%. The bad news is that there's this two-step process that's used for assessments. The towns use this two-step process, and so even though our organization comes in at 2.49%, the assessment process that is used affects the town at maybe a 5% increase. So, they're feeling it, in some cases, double what our, what our actuals are. And that's based upon the number of students and the relative wealth of the communities, and that's controlled by the state, that's not controlled by the district. So, when you go into this process of, this two-step process, this multi-phase process of determining assessments, that's when it really can affect a town in an unpredictable way. So, this year, Merrimack and Groveland are going to feel it in a way that, you know, is maybe more around 5%? Is that about right, Greg?
I read on the very back page, Groveland at 4.6, Merrimack at 5.3.
Yeah.
And West Newbury at 1.
At 1, right.
1.3.
1.3.
So, it doesn't affect every community in the same way. It depends upon the number of students primarily and the relative wealth, and I think there are some other complications in that formula. But in any case, so, Merrimack would have more than a 5% increase, that's the effect of the 2.49%, and Groveland around 4.6, is that what you said?
Yeah.
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 So, that's a big increase to them, and, you know, it's not for lack of trying to manage what we're doing, I'm missing. So, when I came to you initially in January, I had a couple of things that were included in the budget, and they're still included there. So, I have the STEAM Coordinator position next year to be shared by Page and Bagnell. I've got some part-time assistants for central office, but I've taken out the additional teacher at the secondary level for virtual classes and online classes. I've, I've taken that position out. I just couldn't afford it.
And what about the custodial support? Is that still?
Custodial support, Greg?
Oh, there is a grounds person coming in, but that, remember, that was offset by, we took 25,000 out of the pot time, we had to hire a pot time, but it wasn't working out. So, for an additional 10,000, we get a full-time guy dedicated to it, here in the winter, he can help out with the custodial staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I have looked at efficiencies in our staffing, particularly at the secondary level. I do sympathize with class sizes across the whole system, particularly for the couple of classes at Donahue, Page, and Bagnell that have 23 or 24 students, but I, I don't know that this is the year that I can reduce that to a class size of 16. It's just not possible for what we're facing. So, we've been talking with the finance directors at each, in each community, and I'll be meeting Thursday in Merrimack with their finance committee, I'll be meeting March 7th in Groveland with their Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure.
Not the finance committee, though.
Not the finance committee, though. And we're still waiting on that, and we haven't heard, West Newbury hasn't contacted us yet. So, we will be in touch with them as we can to, you know, make whatever explanation they would like, but we've done our darndest to really manage the budget and to, you know, ease their ability to fund the operational budget, even though I know it's going to be a great burden for at least Merrimack and Groveland. So, that's kind of a summary of where we are. So, in addition to that, I've met with, I've conducted a couple of meetings this year with the different organizations, everybody from PTO to the Penn Duckett Education Foundation and the Penn Duckett Athletic Association. I've had group meetings with the representation from these different organizations to talk through what their needs are, what they'd like to do. So, for instance, you'd find a couple of thousand dollars in the budget to help start funding uniforms, annual rotation of uniforms, or to fund the maintenance in the new auditorium, you know, and that sort of thing. It's, it's really just a couple thousand dollars to help seed some of that, that money and to give them assurances that we still remember them, you know? Because, to be honest, some feel as though we have forgotten them in our, in our local budget, and just by giving a little bit, you know, a very tiny bit, they can at least be assured that we, we appreciate them and that we recognize their good work and that it's not all this fake sale activity that's going to generate, you know, what we need.
What's, I don't understand, what's the rationale to the two, two different figures, the state, their, their assessment?
It's two-step process?
Yeah, what, I don't.
Greg can probably help better than, than I can. Although explaining the rationale of the state, that's maybe a little trick.
The reason, the reason we're at the two-step, the district used to work on a per pupil methodology, but the problem with the per pupil methodology is required that you need, we're doing a per pupil methodology with all three towns having to pass the budget for a budget. Well, in Mass General Law, it's kind of iffy, because it really is only supposed to be two out of three. So, all the arguments came to an end, it was decided that, instead of staying with a per pupil methodology, which is a lot smoother, because it's not a lot of population change, so instead of having the wild shift you have now, it'd be a more of an even shift, once it's in someone's budget, it'll just slowly grow up, they decided to go with the state methodology under Chapter 71.
And the effect of going, like, why wouldn't you go back to it, right?
Well, that, well, that's my next question. Is there a way of going back to it?
But before you ask that, you want to know, why wouldn't you go back to it?
Okay, why wouldn't we? Because all three towns would have to agree, and one town would be, would be hurt, I mean, it would be, would be very high on them.
The numbers that we just talked about would be actually higher for the two towns, so as bad as it is, it would be worse for them right now.
And, I mean, I hate to say this, but I did see it on a couple TV programs, they were making an argument that their towns were being subsidized, they were subsidizing another town. The actual methodology is, if you went back to a per pupil methodology in this, Groveland and Merrimack are, would still be being subsidized by West Newbury. So, I mean, you may hear things that, like, we're paying for this other town, it's not true. The only one that's paying anybody out of that old methodology is West Newbury.
Yeah.
So, once you get down that path, though, of this, I mean, you could go back to the other methodologies, the two out of three approval that the towns were blocking at, Masconomic uses that model, which is two out of three for approval, but they use a per pupil assessment. That's just what they agreed to, and they've always lived with it.
Yeah.
We're apparently, we're not at that level right now, so we're at the state mandated Chapter 71 16 assessment, which is, the state says, here's your net minimum spending number, you'll see this number sometimes in the paper, a lot of towns use it as their budget. You'll get, like, a bigger city, they'll say, you have to spend at least that in education, and the town says, that's all you get.
That's all you're getting, right?
We're over that, obviously, so you have that part of it, which the state will tell you how much is each town's share in your district, and then after that, above that number, we do on, we assess on the per pupil methodology, which is in the math sheet you have right here. Additionally, with us, to make it even a little more complicated, capital expenses are assessed on a per pupil basis. So, all the money that we borrowed for fields or the middle school projects, that is based solely on how many people you have in the district, except for the middle school roof part of it, which is only a two-town assessment, because West Newbury wanted to pay all theirs upfront. Thanks for making my life so easy, this is.
But we don't need to complicate it, right?
But that's why you have the assessment sheet in front of you, Anna.
So, say we went back this year to a per pupil, what would you see for increases for Merrimack and Groveland? Do you know that?
I will tell, I won't get, I will tell you, then I can tell you. So all the money that we borrowed for fields or the middle school projects, that is based solely on how many people you have in the district. Except for the middle school roof part of it, which is only a two-town assessment because Wes Newbury wanted to pay all theirs up front. Thanks for making my life so easy. This is.
But we don't need to complicate it, right?
But that's why you have the assessment sheet in front of you.
So, say we went back this year to a per pupil. What would you see for increases for Merrimack and Groveland? Do you know that?
I will tell, I won't get, I will tell you, then I can tell you the number that Wes Newbury would go down. How it would play out? It's about $800,000.
Wes Newbury would go down about $800,000, and the other two towns?
Would go up that much. Might go up 450, 3, like, 450, 350, whatever it would be.
In addition to this.
Yeah. Would it make sense down the road to consider going back to a per pupil?
You'd have to get all three towns to agree. And based upon the numbers I just gave you, I can tell you two towns don't want to do that right now.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, as the?
As it changes, yeah, yeah. There may be an opportunity when it comes back into line at some point.
Yeah.
But I would think that would be your opportunity to have that discussion.
Not when it's so wide.
Not when it's so wide right now. I mean. Go ahead.
Okay. I think, I thought our breakfast before the break was really interesting. We had a legislative breakfast with a bunch of the, you know, the selectmen from the different towns. And I think, I was surprised at how some of the selectmen really seemed unfamiliar with some of the budget challenges we have. And I think it was interesting, too. I think the one thing we didn't mention is the governor's budget. I think it's only, chapter 70, he's only up 1.6% this year because he's funneling so much money to charter schools, if I'm not mistaken. So that's another thing that we're facing, is we have a governor with that kind of a strategy. So, you know, our public schools are paying for the charter schools. But I think it's really important, you know, that we keep the proper perspective when we look at this. For example, you know, looking, I understand Merrimack's going to not be happy about the increase. But if you look at the last 10 years, it's the first time in 10 years they've been the one to get hammered with it. The other two towns, sorry, Groveland, you, you've been hammered multiple times, as is Wes Newbury. You know, the other towns have gotten hammered multiple times over the last 10 years. And I think it's also important that the selectmen in each town really understand what, you know, what Dr. Mulqueen's done to try to get the budget under 2.5, the pressure we're under. And so they can properly represent that to their citizens. Because my concern is they're going to be screaming, the school's not living within its means again, which is always what people say. And that's really not the case. This is, it is what it is, and this is within our means, I think. So, I think any effort we can make to educate our selectmen in our respective towns would be a really good thing.
Jeff?
I would Brian, Brian.
Yeah.
My question, have the adjustments been made in the budget that you presented to us?
When I handed out to you, when I handed out to you after our last meeting, when we were given the direction to try to get it down below, I mean, it looks like we just got it under 2.5 because that's what we could do. But I'm telling you, we just hammered away at every little thing I could guess at. There is nothing left in this budget for fluff, I promise you. So what you've got here, I didn't want to print out the big 46-page one that the towns like for comparison. The one you have in front of you with the paperclip on it replaces the little summary section. This is, would be that budget. This would be those changes.
The 280?
Well, again, it reduces it by the 238,000, but there was other shifting.
Do you see that these things that are coming up this year that have to do with special education, for example, as being one, is that something that we have any ability to predict going forward? Or are these just kinds of things that sort of throw a budget that's been prepared with all good intentions into sort of a tailspin? I'm just looking ahead to next year and what you think the forecast could be going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, that's a really good question. So the kinds of things that affected our special education outplacements this year are not the usual kinds of things that we have experienced regularly in the past. So, I chose my words very carefully, so regularly in the past. Things that can happen but are not usual. So for instance, one of the things that we brought up with the legislative delegation that Andy mentioned was the student who may be severely disabled, who has never been in a public school, whose family moves to a new district, and who's, who's, who that district becomes responsible then for the cost of that student in whatever residential or hospital placement that they might be. And it seems to me, and it seemed in our conversation that day with the legislative delegation, that surely there must be some way for the state to take some control over those top-tier students for whom, you know, public education is not going to really be a service to them. They have such specialized needs and specialized care that's going on. And that by removing that cost from the state, if the state were to take it over, the individual districts wouldn't have that variability. So families, when they move, as families do move, wouldn't have a negative impact, financial impact on a small district, like Kentucky or a large district did for that matter. So that's one of the things that we've experienced this year. And it can be a very high cost for a program. So it's not that we don't want the student to have supports. It's not that we regret or resent in any way that they have a disability that needs to be cared for. It's that the financial component could be assumed by a larger level of the organization, the state level, and reduce the variability across all districts. So the student still gets care, but when the parents move, it doesn't have that big impact. Another cause for some of our outplacements being so expensive is that we have seen a pattern, and so have other districts, in the severity of need that students have. So, it's not that we haven't reduced the number of outplacements. We have, over the course of the past two years, we've reduced from about 45 to 30 outplacements. So you would think, well, then surely you're saving money. But the outplacements cost different amounts of money depending upon the severity of need. So what we're seeing is this trend line of severity increasing, not decreasing. So even though Mike Jarvis has done a good job at trying to keep students in the district by providing new and innovative programs for them, when we have a student that goes out to an out-district placement, it's more typical recently that they require very substantial supports or even residential care, where, you know, it's not, it's no longer just a $40,000 cost. It's a much more expensive cost. Now with that comes something that's called, there's a special ed formula the state uses to reimburse a district. And so, this circuit breaker account that the state uses, you would think, well, then you would get money back in for the expenses that you lay out, right? For the student. So there's a complication there that I don't think is, is well-understood. The first part is, you have a threshold that you have to meet in order to get any reimbursement. So if you can think about the first $50,000 as being our expense, and after that first $50,000, some degree of reimbursement coming, that's how it works. So you can get 70 or 75% reimbursement on an amount above $50,000, but not before it. And then it only comes the year after you've spent the money, not in the same year. So if you have a student who goes out for, let's say, a specialized program, and it costs $60,000, you only get 70% of $10,000, or 75% of $10,000 in the year after you've spent the money. So you don't recoup all of the funding through circuit breaker that you're required to lay out for the expenses. And that's very difficult for us, too. So, I guess the short answer is, we do the best we can to predict. And I think Mike and Greg have done a great job at knowing what's coming and being able to schedule funding for that. But when you have a student who moves, you can't predict that. And when you have a very severely impacted student, it's really just the best placement that you can find for that student. And it's typically, right now, quite expensive for us to do that. So it just takes a couple of students to really throw the budget into this $800,000 difference.
So I have a follow-up. So if the, if the state formula or the state mandates or whatever it is that we must subscribe to sort of dictate what kind of pitfalls we may find ourselves in financially. And as Andy said, that legislative breakfast was a really, was an eye-opening meeting for us. Some of us were from the association invited to go, too. I think that everybody there really came away having a clearer idea of all of these different things that need to come into play before a budget can be really understood.
That's right.
So it was with it, all of those stakeholders who were there. So my question is, how important is to have that conversation continue?
Yeah.
To have the lobbying arm we have? Because we're making such fabulous strides academically with our innovation schools, and then you get hit with something that's completely out of your control. But again, I think they may have that desire to become a year, a listening group, a body for us to advocate. I was just wondering, do you have any plans in place to continue that conversation?
So the communication part, we do have a plan for that. So, last week I was talking with Greg about, I was kind of in his ear about, shouldn't I be putting out some communication about what's going on and all that? And Greg put the brakes on until tomorrow. So after the committee makes a decision tonight about what they would like to do with the budget, tomorrow then, I'll be starting to promote with some communications out to educate the public, to educate the boards of selectmen about these different expenses and what they all mean and how we've been trying to control our budget. But I wanted to wait until tonight because if I jumped the gun, then, you know, it would just become awkward having to re-explain things over and over again.
Hi, Jill.
Jill Ikors from West Newbury. One of the things that I noticed in your narrative is, I saw that there was a trend of you retaining students. And as a person from, you know, one of the, a taxpayer from one of the towns, I think that that's one of the biggest achievements that school has done because you have such a great cost savings there when you can retain a student and not have them go out of district. And I really would like to see more of that positive energy, you know, going out to the community.
Sure.
Instead of pointing fingers at this district or that district.
Yeah.
That, you know, those innovation schools, your teaching staff that you have here, those are all things that are keeping Penn Tucket District students here.
Yeah.
So, congratulations to everyone in the Penn Tucket District for that. But what I would like to speak about is, I have not heard any discussion about possibly bringing back French. And the reason I say this is, last year I was approached by a number of community members about bringing French back. And I was doing some digging on it this year. And, you know, I can bring you all kinds of forms and why French is great. But I think when you do your own research on why French is going to become important in the next five years, you're going to see about Africa. Nearly half of Africa speaks French. We're seeing a lot of diseases that the source is Africa. Our medical people who are going to those countries. You look at places like Haiti. I have a lot of friends who are working with groups in Haiti now. The people speak a derivative of French or down in New Orleans. I've yet to see this committee this year in a public session discuss bringing back French, and I'm disappointed about it. You might have been behind the scenes, but we in the public haven't seen that. So I would like to have you have that discussion next year. It's an important thing to do for our young people, to give that to them. And five years ago, I was against it myself, so I'll be honest with you. I didn't see the need. But the last two or three years, I'm really seeing that that, that is an important language for students to learn. So that being said, thank you for the time.
Jill, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah. So, I want to thank Jill for her comments. And I'll start with the beginning part. So we, we have had a lot of success with having programming here for our special education students that have retained more of our students in the district. And we're still growing that. We're still trying to get our legs, strengthen our legs under that programming. In addition to that, we've had another benefit from our innovation schools. So in the narrative, you may have seen also that typically in January, by the end of January, we have about 50 applications for private school for the eighth grade going to ninth grade. This year, we only had 18. So, that's an indication to me that something is shifting with our students. You have to apply in order to go to the school. And so if there's a drop from 45 or 50 private school applications to 18, I think that's a good indicator for us. Then when it comes to the language programming, the, each innovation school at the elementary level is scheduled for some language program development. So we've had to backtrack just a bit, slow our growth down just a bit. I had hoped this year to actually bringing that forward, but this year, we're bringing in half of the STEAM coordinator for each of the schools. And next year, if things go well and on track, I'm hoping to bring in the half, the next half of the STEAM coordinator for Bagnell and for Paige. So each of them has their own. Plus, to begin bringing in the language component for international backgloria in Merrimack, for Paige, and for Bagnell. So we'll start to grow the language programming from the elementary school on up through. And though I can't promise what the languages will be, certainly French could be considered. There are other languages, too, I think, that we need to think about in the district. So, I do appreciate the emphasis on the language program and its development. I think that's an important part to keep in mind. It's in our innovation school plans for right now. So even though we don't talk about it, it's, it's there and, you know, it's waiting for us to act on.
Any other questions from the public? Additional questions from the committee on the budget? So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY '17 budget.
Second. You want to, you have to say the amount.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Where is it, Greg?
Bottom line.
38 million.
The top line, yeah. 38 million, 55,660 dollars.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY '17 budget for the amount of 38 million, 55,660 dollars.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Doug?
No.
Oh, no.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Anybody opposed? No exchange? Okay, that was unanimous. Okay. All right. So, motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I do want to thank you all for getting all the questions and stuff and keeping this process going because I know it's been a lot of hills and valleys. But all the emails and the phone calls and things asking the questions makes this a much easier hearing to have than they used to be. So I appreciate you guys staying in touch with me.
Please do like all my visits.
I enjoyed Jack's visit immensely.
Camera off?
Yeah.